I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. I'm going to start with a brief introduction for those who are new to this go-to meeting or web meeting format that we're using. Members of the, members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through and be heard or recorded at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. I do not have a traditional wooden gavel here at my workstation. I don't need one. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. If people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all so the person who has the floor can be heard. I will now proceed to go through the agenda. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular agenda item, please type into the chat bar that you do. If you look at what I believe is the top right corner of your screen, you'll see a little chat bubble. Click on that and the chat bar will appear. Please type in and we'll put you in the queue to comment. And I will first look for questions or from those who are participating digitally via computer or smartphone. And once from, I've heard from all who are logged in digitally, I'll see comments from those who have dialed in. If you do intend to comment or I call on you to comment, you must introduce yourself by stating your name and address. We do have an executive session at the end of this meeting. I'm going to ask you all to leave the meeting for the executive session. And once the meeting is clear of those not participating in the executive session, I will lock it. After I've locked the meeting, you will be able to log back in so that you can be brought back into the meeting when we go into public session. With that, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbine? Laughin?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Shertel?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa? Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
Jim Bose?
Present.
And Attorney Farrell? He's here, right?
He's here. I'm sorry, I think I had muted his microphone.
Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbine did advise me that he would be unavailable for this meeting. If we could please have a motion on the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, consent agenda item H has been rescinded and I has been removed. So I approve, motion, we approve or accept consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All ayes, the consent agenda has passed. Item three, aye. Can we have a motion on that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve a transfer on the amount of $13,349 from the maintenance of building account to the capital account for Public Works.
Second.
That was me. That was me. That was not Christina.
Actually, it was a tie. So I'm going to allow the clerk to call it. Moved and seconded. Mr. Boulter Midas, can you please enlighten us? You have to unmute yourself first. I was just trying to unmute you and I can't.
I think I figured it out.
Yep, you're on.
I apologize for that delay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, counselors. So very simply, this last Wednesday, we got a call from Town Hall, part of the third floor, the Human Resource Department, Risk Managers Office, and also some spaces on the second floor, we're not receiving any heat. We had our vendor go and respond. One of eight, there are eight rooftop units on Town Hall. One of those units is beyond repair. It's over 20 years old. It needs to be replaced. We would always pay for this work out of the maintenance of buildings and grounds account. This is a formality where we need to transfer the money from that account to do the repair into a capital account because it is a capital item. So that's the reason for the request tonight.
Okay, so this is just an accounting line keeping that?
I believe so. If Mr. Bose is on the line, maybe you could explain why, but yes, it's a formality.
Thank you. Counselor Morganstein, this was your removal, so your item.
Yes, yes, thank you. So this item was removed at the request of a member of the public. And I think I understand that we have aging infrastructure. And so the question from the public was relatively understanding that and now hearing that it's a part of an overall unit. I think some of the question is answered. So first off, this is one of eight. So this unit could not be brought in to be any different type of unit because it's one of a bigger unit, correct?
Well, it's an entire unit. And what happens unfortunately when, when anything, a mechanical item, electronic item, when they get to be a certain age, you know, your chances of getting parts are less and less. This particular unit is over 20 years old. We can't get the parts for it to fix this particular unit, so it needs to be replaced in its entirety and that's what makes it a capital item.
Right. So, so the question again is twofold. So do we have a plan? Do you have a plan based on what we're able to give you financially to be overhauling our aging of these units? And if so, is there any plan for more energy efficient products? And is there any plan for auditing our energy use, our cost of repairs against perhaps, you know, laying out a bit more upfront, but reducing our energy usage and thus saving in the long run?
That was, wow, that was a lot of questions all at once, so I'll try to remember them all. So what's, what's interesting, the timing of this is I just went through an exercise with our HVAC vendor of assessing all of our heating, ventilation, air conditioning units on all of our municipal buildings. So yes, I do have a sense of what units will be coming up next and to try to plan for capital improvements. Another example of that is the controls that control the dampers in the units at Town Hall. A couple of years back, we replaced them on the second and third floor. We know for a fact that that drastically reduced the number of calls we had to make to our vendor to come and do repairs. We're looking to do the same thing for the first floor and basement. Again, I think we'll see overall savings with that. Just because of regulations, really anything you buy these days is a more energy efficient unit than it was 20 years ago. But I think what I'd like to do, and I think what you'll see me do in the next budget cycle is actually plan some of these replacements of these older units as a capital item going forward the next couple of years.
And then the request on that piece, which in this town seems to be controversial, is whether we could look at any of these units being solar.
Well, I would, I'm going to defer that unfortunately to somebody who's not here, and that's our electric division because I'm not necessarily convinced that a unit in and of itself can be solar. It needs to draw electric power. How we buy and get that power, that's, that's something to talk about.
Okay, yep. And I appreciate your coming out tonight. Thank you so much, Rob.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council about this? Any questions from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Laughin?
Yeah.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Shertel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Has Councilman Testa joined us?
Not that I can see.
Okay. Zandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And then the motion passes.
Thank you. With that, we are on to the public question and answer period. I don't see any requests in the chat bar. And I think the one question I have is part of the next item. So with that, we will move on to item six, which is discussion regarding the police community impact unit. On the meeting, we have Chief Wright and we also have Amanda Miranda from Youth and Social Services. Chief Wright, would you like to tell us about your new community impact unit?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you all. It's nice to see you again even remotely. For the past several months, the deputy chief and I have been discussing the creation of a new unit within the department to answer, if you will, and respond to problems in our community that are, for some reason or another, a continuing event. We continue to put more and more work on to the patrol division. And as a result of the call volume there, some of these equally as important issues to our community members typically don't get the attention that they should. So this specialized unit will concentrate on those issues that they can have an immediate effect on, resolve the problem much quicker, hopefully. If it, you know, rears its ugly head again, if you will, they can circle back around and take another look at it. The officers have not been chosen yet. I put out a request to our agency. For those that might be interested in this unique work, I've gotten a number of responses. I'm going to staff that unit very quickly and set them about their work. So some of the things that we're thinking of, although not all inclusive, dealing with walk and talks with our businesses, our residents and our clergy, dealing with some issues in the downtown parking lots. Annually, we receive quite an extensive list from the water division for cars that are unregistered and parked within the watershed. That's a town ordinance that requires our attention, so they'll be handling that. Some blight issues where we can have an impact. And I say that primarily because in this example, blight is an issue that's typically handled by the building department, but they can't be everywhere. And some things that are brought to our attention, we might be able to have an impact on it, if not certainly refer to the building department where that issue might be. Some things that Councilman Zandry will call us routinely on, if he sees it around, there's furniture left on the side of the road for a period of time that it's clear that it's not going to be picked up. The health department is very quick to respond to that when we let them know that it's out there. But I will tell you, and I don't have to, that Steve Civitelli and his crew have done yeoman's work in keeping our community safe as relates to the COVID pandemic. And I would probably offer that they just don't have the time right now to deal with that issue, which on an otherwise day might be very important to them, but right now they just don't have the time. We want to be able to have some positive impact there as it relates to resolving those issues. So the work there is going to change. We want them to concentrate on some narcotics-based investigations. I can't say a lot about that. And it'll be a group of officers that are going to be hopefully, what I expect, high speed and willing to take on the work that needs to be done. So that's kind of the overall intent of the unit.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Morganstein, this item is on at your request and you did also ask that Amanda Miranda from Youth and Social Services be here. Is there anything that you'd like her to address?
Yes, thank you and welcome, Amanda. I met you over the phone this morning. Nice to kind of meet you in person. So I think everyone knows that there is an effort in other communities to work in social service departments together with police departments. And certainly everything, Chief, that you are putting in place is a good response to things that, yes, other departments have had to deal with that really do at times need a police influence. One of the things that I wanted to put out there is ask the question as to whether, and I'm sure there probably has been, but whether there's some ongoing plan. Because so many things that happen in communities are individuals that have also social service needs. And I wanted to get a sense of the two departments working together, whether there's some planning in that direction.
Well, on my end, I'm working closely with the police department. We talk frequently about youth issues in the community. We are working on, we have a diversion program. So if officers go out and they're dealing with juvenile, as a juvenile or even older adults now at this point, social service issues, they can reach out to us here and extra, to me, and I'll field that phone call and then kind of assess and figure out, am I, you know, are we getting, am I working with the family? Are we, how are we, how is this agency going to work with the family? Are we providing education to the youth? Are we assisting through our social service unit here and getting the services the family might need? There's a lot of different ways we can kind of work with a family. Each is going to be unique, different, but in the way of really working with the police department with the juveniles, if there's an issue in the community, you know, it's getting that information from the officers, you know, what's happening, what's going on in that situation? And then creating a diversion piece for that family, for that youth in lieu of going to court or other services, getting involved so we can kind of stop it at the door. You know, and hopefully make things better for that family and then assess from there.
Yeah, well, certainly the chief has repeatedly expressed that having, not having the juveniles in the court system and the legal system is obviously the preference. And I am not sure I'm completely familiar with the setup of your department at this point. Do you see newly here that your staffing to carry out the needs of this community is adequate?
Well, I'm, at the moment, I'm looking, you know, into adding some things, moving things around. As I said, I've been here just about a month.
And during a pandemic.
Yeah, in a pandemic, yes, trying to figure things out. Totally new position for me. So trying to, I mean, yes, I've been with the town for a long time. It's been 18 years, but you know, you're trying to, I'm meeting people really like for the first time because my role is just so different. So really trying to, you know, moving forward, trying to figure things out. But you know, I'm looking to build more here in the YSS, build more programming, collaborating with other agencies, getting us out there more. You know, definitely just growing as an agency for sure.
Yeah, good, good. And then a specific incident that has been rather ongoing that I felt was appropriate to bring up in this vein, Chief and Amanda. It, it sounds to me from members of the public and that there seems to be a relation with the pandemic and school times and such, that there is an ongoing issue at Doolittle Park with school presumably before their parents are home from work. And I've heard tell of pot smoking and fistfights and families that just are not able to any longer bring their children to that park. So I wonder if you both could address our efforts in that regard, please?
So if I may, Mandy. So I'm intimately familiar, Counselor Morganstein, with that issue at Doolittle Park. I can tell you that our efforts there, I don't think have solved the problem particularly, but I do and can tell you that our efforts there have, I believe anyway, minimized some of that issue which is going on. I actually have pretty good cruiser video of our officers playing basketball with some of the younger kids there, just trying to learn who they are and, and you know, what the issues might be down there. I think it's a different group of youth, if you will, or young adults, you know, after four or five o'clock in the afternoon, we've taken note of that. The community policing unit has made that a stop on their routine trip around town. They've documented their property checks down there through the dispatchers so we can, you know, quantify that. I'm aware of some of the strong language that's been used by some of the kids down there. And I can tell you that we're certainly aware of it. I know that some of the neighbors in the area are frustrated by, one, our inability to completely solve that issue and two, some of the manner in which they've been spoken to by some of the kids that are at the park there. So yes, I'm familiar with, with that issue at Doolittle Park.
And I know on my, oh, I'm sorry. On my end, if for us to be able to work with certain families, we'll, we need the information. So I know I'm working with the police department. When specific cases come in, so when they get called out and there's, and there is criminal behavior happening, that information gets sent over to us here in Youth and Social Services. And, you know, we'll do an intake process, assess, provide education. Again, you know, each family's different and we're just going to figure out kind of what's going on to help the family and to help that youth make the better choices.
Yeah, no, it's very challenging times. I appreciate you both. Thank you so much. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Miranda, what do you do if you just have a non-responsive family? What can you do?
It's a challenge. You know, in the past, I've always, my approach has always been of helping and offering information and options, you know, encouraging families to call and reach out if things are happening, or if there are things that they're concerned about. And usually if I can get the parents on board, then I'll, having the youth involved is usually a non-issue. You know, so you're really working, reaching out to the families and just saying, you know, this is what we have, this is how we can be helpful. If it's not right now, then, you know, hold the information and contact us when you're ready. And that's, I've pretty, I've always, for the most part, have had good responses, I feel like, and good relationships throughout my time here, here in town, so. You know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So and then at that point, if you're ready to throw your hands up in the air, do they become Chief Wright's customer?
Um, if it reaches a point where, yeah, and we've had situations where, you know, they're, the poor choices are getting made. You know, you try to educate, you know, that's when I'll have that conversation with the officer, with the deputy chief. He's my point of contact within the police department. And, you know, speaking with the officer and kind of, okay, what's the next step? What are we going to do to move forward? So there are options.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think it's important to, I think it's important to reflect on the fact that a lot of the reach that we used to have with, with our youth through some state mandated and state sanctioned programs have gone away. Right? So over the past several years, youth and crisis and our ability to deal through the court system with youth and crisis for a number of reasons have gone away. Our ability to deal with families and help families that have service needs that ultimately could be deferred and referred down to court for more formal help, that has now evaporated and gone away. Those programs have gone away. So, so we're left to our own, right? And we're not the only town and it's, it's a statewide issue. So it requires people like Mandy and her team and our team here to constantly collaborate with, as relates to what the police department does, with what is our best move in the interest of the child, right? And that's what our move is always, in the best interest of the child. So I staff a Monday morning meeting every week. Mandy is in attendance at those meetings with us so that nothing slips through the cracks. And, and I would, you know, just like to say that I think by and large, this community as a whole, not just the police department, and I won't speak for Youth and Social Services, but I think I can, that I think we do a really good job collectively in this community of making sure that there's not a youth that slips through the cracks that we can't help. It's a little bit sticky now with the elimination of some of these more formal programs, which puts more pressure on local services to make sure that youth is cared for. But by and large, I believe that this community does a wonderful job caring for its youth.
Thank you for that and I would agree with you. Before we go to the public, we do have a question from Counselor Shertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you both for, for being here. Chief, just a quick question. Can you just give us a status on overall staffing? I know that this unit is not adding staff, but I know we added two officers, I think in two straight budgets, I think 18 and 19. Is that where we are now or did we, did we lose, did we fill those positions? I just want to get a quick update on that, please.
Yes, so we filled those positions. I currently have two vacancies. I lost an officer to Greenwich. He lives out on Long Island, so the commute is shorter for him. And I just lost an officer to Groton or one of the Grotons. And he lives down in Groton City himself. So we've just made a conditional offer to a lateral transfer officer from Hartford. And we are interviewing other lateral transfer candidates, which helps us. In a timing sense of not having to send them to the academy. And that will bring us back to full staff.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Shawna Simon-Glyden, you've been waiting very patiently, so please.
Hi, thank you. I'm Shawna Simon-Glyden. I'm at twenty-nine Pomeroy Avenue in Wallingford, Connecticut. I'm also here with my neighbor, Michael Trocchio, who lives down the road and would like to speak after me if that's okay.
That's fine.
Perfect, okay. So first, we've lived here for a year now. We bought the house specifically for the location to the park. And over the course of the last year, what we've seen is children smoking in the park, a lack of police presence. Fistfights, cursing, someone stole my daughter's tricycle and threw it into the river. And we've tried to make the appropriate phone calls. We've called the police department more than once. We've called Youth and Social Services. And I feel like what we've gotten is more of a run, run around. And a little bit of blanket statements over things. So Miranda, I know you're new and I don't know if you remember speaking to me, but I called you not too long ago.
Yeah.
And part of what I was talking about was maybe what we need to do is get together with other community partners. Like our NPOs, like the Coalition for a Better Wallingford, the YMCA. Maybe reach out to the PTACs, PTOs or the PTAs, maybe Rushford and the police department. And get everybody together to kind of come up with a community solution. And the response I got from you, and I know you're new, is when I see it, to call the police. That's not working because I call the police, the police show up, the kids are gone. Also, the police are really staying in the parking lots. The majority of this stuff is occurring on the pathway behind the red building and up over by the river. So that's where the bigger drug issue is occurring. I'm not the only parent that's dealing with this. I have other friends who are no longer bringing their kids to the park because it's gotten to be such an issue. Chief Wright, I had a question about your staffing. You said you're not at full staff for your community policing. What is full staff for you guys?
Our total sworn complement is seventy-five.
No, 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 for the community policing unit specifically.
The community policing unit is fully staffed with a sergeant and two officers.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I spoke with your community policing department twice this year. And what I've been told by him is especially since the time I talked to him after school started. Was that their job is to be in the schools, which I love, don't get me wrong. I was a huge advocate for that. But it doesn't sound like he has enough staff to take on this additional issue.
So this. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, do you feel that's the case?
So the creation of this new unit that I spoke of a few minutes ago is going to pick up that slack.
Okay, so how many people are going to be assigned to that new unit?
Another sergeant and three sworn.
Okay, and do you think that's going to be sufficient? Because I, I'm thinking that you guys are a little short-staffed on this end. You're trying to tackle, I'm just going back to my notes. The parking issues downtown, blight. And then also, I'm sure Doolittle is not the only park that we have issues in. And Wallingford is a very large town. It just sounds like maybe what you guys need is more staff.
So through the mayor and then ultimately by the council's approval. They've been kind enough in the last, over the five years that I've been the chief anyway, to give me four additional police officers. And we made a captain's position. Staffing is always, is always an issue. That's why we continually move people around, Shawna, to different units, trying to do the best that we can. I will tell you that the building itself probably won't hold any more than we currently have for a lot of reasons. But I think if, if you were to reach out to me either tomorrow or certainly early next week. We can have, I think, a more in-depth conversation about some of the ideas that I have that can probably help with this issue. Not only on Pomeroy, but certainly within the park.
Okay, I would love to meet with you and I will definitely call you tomorrow. I'll take you up on that. I mean, I've worked with you in the past on some other issues a couple of years ago. And I know you are a super proactive and you love community policing and you've been wonderful. I haven't called you on this particular issue because I believe that it's important to follow chain of command first. So, but I will definitely call you tomorrow. Mr. Savani, if I can pass it over to my neighbor, would that be okay?
That'd be fine, just have him identify himself. Thank you.
Sure, Michael Trocchio, forty Wall Street, which is right around the corner from Pomeroy. We live basically backside entrance to Doolittle Park. And to reiterate what Shawna Glyden has experienced, we've experienced much of the same. My wife and I, we have four kids together, ranging in ages from seven to eighteen. And all of our kids like to use the park. And especially this past year, it's become, become increasingly more difficult. To take especially my younger kids to the park. You know, between drug use. Horrible language. And I know you touched kind of on some of the, the steps you're taking to, to combat that. But I just looking for a little elaboration on what, what specifically, what extra measures are being taken to kind of curb that? So we can, once again, start enjoying the park that we, we love.
Okay, so you know, obviously more of our presence there is going to deter that from occurring, right? Identifying what's going on down there. Identifying what times of the day it's going on down there, who the players might be. A referral to Mandy's team where appropriate. You know, a criminal investigation if that's appropriate. We're aware of the problem and, and I don't want to sound like I'm minimizing it because I'm not. But I think, you know, to the point I, I made to Shawna a few minutes ago. If you're willing, Mike, to meet with us, with Shawna or even separately and come up to your home. I'd like to kind of explain what our, what our plan is there to help you out.
Absolutely.
Can I say something?
Please.
On my end, we've, I've been collaborating with, participating in meetings starting last week. With different agencies within town. Nonprofits as well as other town agencies. And just talking about overall, what can we do for youth in, with, during a pandemic? With, you know, with your concerns with school and with remote. And when they're, when they're being home. And so we're trying, you know, there have been conversations throughout these meetings and trying to brainstorm and, and come up with some ideas. You know, I don't think everybody that I've actually met with in these meetings is on here tonight. But that is something, the conversations are happening. And you know, it's just, we're getting there. So I hear, I hear everybody and I hear their concerns. And we're here if you want to, you know, give us a call and see what else we can come up with.
Thank you. Next up is Fran Proscino.
Good evening, Frances LaFrance Proscino, fourteen Jackson Avenue. I just have a question for you, Chief Wright, regarding emotionally disturbed individuals. When I worked on Center Street, there were quite a few, they were primarily very calm individuals. But I was wondering if you have a plan for, there were one or two that were rather unruly. And I didn't know if you had a plan for talking them down in coordinated, in coordination with our mental health professionals?
So generally speaking, right, our officers are trained in de-escalation skills where appropriate. It's a forty-hour course that we put them through. But I am required by the end of December as part of the new police accountability bill to report to. The Police Officer Standards and Training Council. The feasibility of wrapping social services into some of these potentially non-criminal. Calls that we get sent to just for the reason that you explained. So the difficulty with that, I will tell you, and I have one of my lieutenants working on what the feasibility of that is. Is there are many, many services that are available, but unfortunately, they're typically Monday through Friday, nine to five, if you will. So at the time that some of these calls seem to jump off. I'm not so sure that we would have the opportunity to attach those services. As we would need to, right? So some departments are investing in more of a regional approach. And I think that would be our best way forward. We're working with some different departments in our area to seek the services. They're, they can be quite expensive, but to seek the services of some mental health professionals to work alongside us. Maybe not on or in the moment that the event is occurring, but certainly thereafter where some social services. Or mental health services have been identified. Mandy's team is certainly qualified to do the social service work. But the mental health piece is going to have to go to a different level. And at that point, you know, our, our really only. Solution in the, at that time that it's occurring, if the party is, is of danger to themselves or others, is a referral. By a committal to the hospital. And although that takes care of the safety of the person at the time, it never really truly solves the problem. There needs to be continuing care. So, so I'm due to have that report to post by the end of December. And our hope is to have some wraparound services more from a regional basis.
So, but your biggest problem has been that there's nothing available, you know, seven twenty-four. I, I can appreciate that. I really can because so many different issues will trigger this sort of thing. Do they have any plans to have anybody at least verbally with the, with the officer to help them with the situation? I understand you can't go around with a psychiatrist all the time, that'd be kind of bizarre. But will they have any, anything beyond their forty-hour class to assist them in that?
Yeah, in some bigger cities where their call volume is such that it's appropriate to have civilian staffing. There are crisis management teams that ride with sworn law enforcement to these calls. I mean, I think it's typically the only calls that, that both the officer and the mental health professional go to. I guess we should be fortunate that we don't have that level of call volume here that, that's necessary. But at the same time, each and every call, as few as there might be, are, are critical to our coming to a peaceful resolution. You know, as quickly as we can, right, for the safety of all involved. So I think that's going to be a stumbling block, to be honest with you, is how we seek and are able to attract the services that we need. In these kind of off-hours and even during the day, Monday through Friday. You know, if, if it jumped off right now downtown, that social worker may be in an office two or three towns away. And you can imagine the time that it would take for them to respond while we're trying to hold the scene at the same time. It's a difficult thing.
Yeah, it, I agree with you. It is a very difficult thing. And it's often very dangerous for both the officer and the individual. How often do the officers have that forty-hour or is it just one time training class?
Yeah, so the first bit of the training they get at the academy is a general kind of introduction. We send them off to that forty-hour class, one at, two at a time, sometimes twos and threes where we can get seats. And then I believe that it's part of their recertification, which occurs every three years. Not the forty hours, probably just a refresher. But I'm not positive on that, if that's part of the recertification or not.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your honest answers. It's refreshing. I appreciate both of your efforts to assist with our, our, our youth. It's, it's reassuring to know this is ongoing. Thank you both.
Thank you.
I saw a comment from Jacqueline in the chat bar. Jacqueline, did you want to speak?
No, Fran actually asked my question for me, so that was perfect.
I thought I'd give you the opportunity anyway. Thank you. And then we have Kevin Cindy Sigovitch. For the record, please.
Cindy Sigovitch, one thirty-one Prince Street.
Thank you.
So I'm actually the chairperson of the Special Education PTAC for the Wallingford School District. Recently, we've had a discussion that it would be both helpful for the police department and first responders. As well as for our community of special needs to form a relationship. And encourage training for the first responders. And how they interact with those with special needs and disabilities. So I think that I've talked to Dr. Menzo and the department chair of the Special Education Department. So we will be reaching out soon to try and form that relationship. And kind of reassure our population of special needs people. And go forward from there. I know Camden has recently had some intensive training on that. And looking into what other training our first responders could have. And where we could develop that a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other chatter in the chat bar. And I don't see anyone on the telephone. So Chief and Ms. Miranda, I want to thank you both for participating this evening. I, I think this discussion was helpful in light of some urgent and community issues. That might have been aggravated by our current limitations in society. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I suspect that the crowd will thin after executive session. So before we go into executive session, I do want to acknowledge that tonight is our last meeting. With Town Clerk Barbara Thompson, who is retiring, I believe, before our next meeting. And so normally, I think I would probably throw the screen over to Counselor Fishbind, who would read a poem. But he's not here tonight to do that. So I'm going to be very brief and, but I want to thank you for your years of service. I think as long as I've been on the council, you've been the town clerk. And I think you served for two years in a term before I was on the council. So that's about a dozen years.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, lucky thirteen.
Lucky thirteen.
Yes.
In a pandemic.
Yeah, and I, I think. Certainly for the last four terms, I've probably worked with you more than anybody else on the council. And you certainly showed me that you've been dedicated to the council's cause, even when the charter changed. And we didn't hire you anymore. So I do appreciate your years of dedication and I'll just end with a quick one, which is roses are red. one, which is roses are red, violets are blue. Barbara Thompson, we're going to miss you. And I guess I'm gonna go out on a limb, and I'm going to offer the counselors the opportunity to speak. Christina, Counselor Tada has unmuted herself already, so in a bold move, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to wish you happy retirement, and thank you for everything you do for us. And it's been great to get to know you. And you've always been supportive of me and helpful to me, and, you know, really helped me kind of get started here. So thank you and best wishes in your retirement.
Thank you, Christina.
Anyone else before we get back to business? Counselor Laffin, and then Shertel.
Yeah, Barbara, congratulations, good wishes on your retirement. Also, thank you. You're helping me get started when Christina wasn't even dreaming of her political diapers. So that is, and anybody that doesn't like me, you can blame Barbara as one of the reasons why I'm around. So, but thank you for all of the time and service that you've put in, in our community, in politics and in governance and in the operations of the town. So thank you and enjoy your retirement on the shore.
Thank you.
Shertel.
Well, I would have had a poem, because my poems are way better than Craig's. But I thought you were going to be here for one more meeting. But I do, just want to echo what everyone else said, and thank you for everything that you've done, you know, for me. Again, I have the same story everyone else has, too. I admit, you were the first people I met back in 2013. And so you've been such a help. And I specifically want to thank you. You, you did, and I don't know if this was on purpose or not, you gave me the greatest gift for my legacy, which is, in the minutes from the last meeting, you captured my comment about the fact that I said I hate lawyers.
Yes.
And I was talking to Craig. So no offense to Jerry, or Jeff, or the mayor's a lawyer. And no offense to any lawyer, Vinnie, sometimes, but no, I'm kidding. But I was referring to Craig. So the fact that you captured that in, in the minutes, just, you know, in fifty years, there'll be some Boy Scout or Girl Scout doing a community service project, picking up minutes of old meetings, and they're going to find this guy, Shawtelle, who said he hated lawyers. And that's because of you. So that's, appreciate that. But definitely, you know, best of luck, and we'll miss you.
I knew that would make you happy, Chris.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just very briefly, Barbara, it's been great to get to know you over the years. You've been great to me and great to this council. I don't think many people in the public understand that you're sort of the, the bridge between all of us that live these lives on devices all the time in town hall, which is sort of low-tech. So I get that's likely today, kind of being the conduit between the, you know, the high-tech and the low-tech. But I give you a lot of credit for, because you never complained about it. You always do it with a smile, and you always seem to get everything done. So best of luck. I'm a little bit envious of your house on the water, but, but best of luck in the future. And I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Zandry wrote the chat bar for you.
I missed it.
It's at the bottom of the chat bar. And if that's all we have, then, oh, Counselor Morganstein, I saw the hand.
I wrote mine privately, but in case, Barbara, you didn't see it, you've been the best town clerk I've worked with. You might be the only one, but I really have appreciated you very, very much. And I am so jealous. So enjoy it all and enjoy those grandkids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Thank all of you.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, do we have anything from the mayor for the property?
No.
No, thanks.
No item seven.
Mr. Chairman and fellow counselors, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections one dash two hundred six B and one dash two hundred and twenty-five F regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to a pending claim in the matter of Connecticut Carpentry Corp. versus Town of Wallingford.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it. I declare the council in executive session. If you're not a proper participant to the executive session, I'd ask you to kindly leave the meeting. And we will allow you back in after the executive session is complete. And I'm just going to take a, a minute or two to thin the crowd.
This will now be recorded.
He's on.
I know he's on. I don't know if he hit his red button yet. All right, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll move.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. Can we have a motion on item number nine?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the settlement as discussed in the pending claim, Connecticut Carpentry Corp. versus Town of Wallingford, in executive session.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Laffin?
Yeah.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Shertel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yeah.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
With that, that is all the business on our agenda, and I will wrap up the meeting. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
This conference is no longer being recorded.